Good afternoon.
Chair.
Good afternoon.
I don't know what's my with this bunch. I hope everybody is well and getting ready.
I'm fixing mine. I can't hear anything.
You can't hear anything, Julian? This is the perfect time to say anything you want to Julian. He can't hear anything. Are you having technical difficulties? I see them, but. Let's hold on a sec. Is that a picture of the lobby? That he's using for backdrop? I noticed that last week. Is that our lobby, Chris?
Yes, that is the Christmas tree, the holiday tree from last year. We have it in a different spot. I know no one's been up in the office as of late because everyone's teleworking, but it, yes, that is our reception area.
Okay. Julian, can you hear us now?
Yes, I can.
Okay, we're gonna start then. Good afternoon, everyone. I hope everybody's well. Uh, this is for, uh, this is legislative session 2020, legislative day number 29, uh, for the December 21st, uh, council meeting. Uh, the first item, uh, we'll call for bills for final reading and vote. Um, first, on page one. I'm sorry, we have on page one, we have David Baikoff. With us to discuss Bill 119 dash 20. Mr. Baikoff, are you with us?
I am. Good evening.
Good evening, afternoon. Yep.
So, yeah, so good morning. I apologize. Um, I am here to present Bill.
119 dash 20.
Thank you. Uh, so the department was awarded a hazard mitigation grant to, a hazard mitigation planning grant in the amount of $25,120. Uh, this grant will go to, um, to fund in part, uh, the development of the hazard mitigation plan, which is a very large document that is required to be developed by FEMA or by local jurisdictions that FEMA requires be developed every five years that identifies the hazards and plans to mitigate those hazards within a jurisdiction. Uh, it is a matching, uh, matching grant. Uh, we are responsible for, uh, $7,850 of in-kind match that will be, um, accounted for through, uh, employee time and contributions to meetings, so there is no cost. Uh, the grant, the, the plan does cost more than the awarded amount. Um, and we intend to, uh, fund the remaining out of, uh, an emergency management performance grant, um, to cover the total cost of the hazard mitigation plan. Uh, so we are requesting, um, excuse me, a supplemental appropriation in total of $25,120.
Okay. Do any of the members have any, uh, questions? For the chief? No? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next, we're gonna move down to council business, um, on page 29. We have, uh, Ms. Rosalyn Johnson with us for Resolution 143 dash 20.
Good afternoon, Council Chair and members of the council. This is Resolution 143 dash 20, which would allow us to accept a monetary donation of $2,000 from the Ruth Conrad Revocable Trust for the Department of Recreation and Parks use. Um, she left this in her will for us to be able to use, and we will use it towards recreation facility renovations or enhancements if we're allowed to be able to accept it.
Wonderful. Is this Ruth Conrad in Middle River, the Conrad family?
Um, that's a good question. Um, we don't know. Um, she used to serve on the board for the Oregon Ridge Rec Council, and she was an instructor in Tow- at Towson State University, um, and got her degree in kinesiology, um, has a wonderful history in recreation and parks and was a coach. Um, so that part I'm not sure about, but I can look into it and get back to you.
Yeah, I'm Ruth Conrad, and, uh, we have Ruth Conrad Villa, and that was named after Ruth Conrad as well. So I was just curious. Uh, well, that's a wonderful donation. Um, I'm sure none of the members will have any problems accepting that, uh, on your behalf. Uh, anybody have any questions about the donation?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes.
This may be a question for Mr. Blades. Uh, does the acceptance of a gift, is that the equivalent of a supplemental appropriation? So that we have the authorization to spend that gift, or is it just a fund source?
Sorry, I was halfway through my answer.
Okay.
Sorry, councilman. Um, so in the capital budget, we have a revenue source where we identify, uh, donations. I think it's, um, revenue source 9678. And that allows us to, um, identify the funding source, but we still have to come to council with the resolution to accept the actual donation.
So we already have the appropriation?
We have the appropriation authority to accept it. Yes, sir.
Got you. Thank you very much for that clarification.
Sure.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Blades. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair and council members.
Have a good night. Uh, now we'll go up to approval of fiscal matters and contracts on page 25. Uh, we have Deandre Walker, our acting director of, uh, Department of Public Work with us.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and councilmembers.
Little louder. Could anybody else here? I couldn't.
Deandre, try moving the mic. There you go.
How about there? Is that better? Yeah. It's been a long day already. Afternoon, Madam Chair and council members. Uh, the administration is requesting approval of a contract, um, to provide rental of heavy equipment specifically, uh, within the specifications at rates quoted within our requested bid. Uh, the heavy equipment is used, uh, primarily by solid waste highways, utilities, and utilities at the landfill are for repair and infrastructure work. The rental of the equipment is required as, as, uh, the county either does not stock these large expensive pieces of equipment. And our fleet are, um, the existing pieces of equipment is down or unavailable such as a bulldozer, um, to overhaul, um, some dirt or something like that, or multiple pieces of equipment are needed to meet unforeseen, uh, circumstances like floods or storms. Um, the contract is, uh, for a one-year term with four one-year renewal options. It was selected based on a best value and a competitive bid and low bid.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Walker? Okay, thank you, Ms. Walker.
Thank you.
Good luck with the storm.
Woo, thank you.
We had no snow last year. You missed out.
I missed out. You all have a good evening.
Thank you. Okay, next, we're going to, uh, move back up to, um, bills and, yeah, yeah, okay. So first, we're going to turn to page, I want to say 12. We have, uh, Lawrence Richardson with us, Deputy Director of Health and Human Services. Hi, Lawrence.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the, members of the council. I believe I'm first.
12221st?
12220, yes. So 12220, uh, the administration is seeking a supplemental appropriation of state funding in an amount of $143,837. This is for our Bupur Morphine project. Uh, this is gonna support, uh, three part-time salaries, uh, positions of a nurse practitioner, alcohol and drug counselor, and office assistant. Uh, the goal of this program is we'll be placing these positions within two of our health centers, and they will be ongoing in increasing awareness on opioid, um, the effects of opioid epidemic, and be treating, uh, children and families that experience numerous negative consequences related to opioid disorder.
Wow, thank you. Sounds like a good thing. Um, any members have any, uh, questions? For Mr. Richardson? No? Okay, thank you, sir.
Right. I think I'm still up.
Yep. 12320.
2320 is our COVID-19 CDBG eviction prevention grant. Um, I think you'll be hearing about the overall program from Mr. Gutwold soon, but the Department of Social Services applied for the CDBG eviction prevention grant program totaling an amount of $180,000. Uh, this will provide eviction, uh, prevention and rental assistance payments to approximately 50 eligible county households, uh, for up to three to six months of, of eviction or rent, rent payment. Uh, the, the grant itself will be for households who are facing, um, eviction and rental arrears due to COVID-19 pandemic, and is to provide and assist with supports towards housing, uh, stabilization and self-sufficiency.
Okay, so you're saying that, um, folks who apply for this have to show, uh, cause that they either lost their jobs to COVID or they've had to take care of somebody with COVID and was unable to work?
Correct, yes.
They do have to, uh, show that, okay. Um, does anyone have any questions or comments?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, I, uh, in my district and I'm sure in other districts, that you have, uh, extended stay establishments. And from what I'm told, uh, the people who rent in those facilities are not covered by, uh, any of this, uh, relief, uh, extended to renters. And, uh, uh, Lawrence or James, do you have any, uh, information on that? What, what I hear is happening is that, uh, people are being evicted. Well, I talked to one that was evicted from an extended, uh, stay facility, uh, for lack of paying rent. And, uh, so if you could look at that for me?
I can, we can definitely look into that. I don't have any information on that currently. I don't know if Mr. Benjamin.
That is an issue, uh, councilman, that, uh, we can look into, uh, for you.
And, um, uh, Councilman Cash, we took that, uh, information. It was provided in email. So we did take that back to discuss it. Terry Hickey from HHS is looking into it. It was provided to him. And we are looking at that from our legal side of the legal assistance side of it. So that's gotten into the, the review and research side of things.
Yeah, it, it's, uh, they're handled differently than a hotel motel in that once a person has stayed for 30 days straight, the county tax that they've paid is refunded back to them. Uh, so it is handled differently, so, uh, you know, all, so I appreciate you looking at it and, uh, because I know that people that live, it's families who live in these, uh, extended stay, and they have pets, et cetera. So, uh, I'd appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Sure. Councilman, it's, uh, it's Terry Hickey. Real, real quick, that we're building a list of cases of, of this one plus others that seem to fall in the gaps of a lot of this different federal funding with restrictions, and we're gonna try to tackle them as a, as a group. So we'll report back.
Okay, thank, thank you. Thank you very much.
Councilor and Cash, thank you for bringing that up. I, I just was not thinking of those people that this could be affecting in that way.
I had a constituent contact me who is not, doesn't live in one of these, but I know someone who does and get, uh, evicted, so.
Wow, okay. Thanks for bringing it to our attention. Okay, uh, let me see. Next, we have, uh, on page 18, uh, we have Bill 124 dash 20.
Okay, Bill 124 dash 20 is also a supplemental appropriation. Uh, the administration is seeking in the amount of $55,000 for our Baltimore County Crisis Services Awareness Campaign. This funding will go to our vendor, our crisis awareness to provide, um, media campaign and public awareness for the services offered by the Baltimore County Crisis Response Service Program through a marketing campaign. This is a one-time grant and will allow BCCRS to market their program through our Baltimore County to provide increased awareness of the services offered through the program.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, hearing nine, uh, are you covering the last 125 dash 20?
Yes, this is.
That's on page 21, folks.
So this is another supplemental appropriation, uh, from Maryland Department of Health in the amount of $72,996. And this is for the County Detention Center Bupur Morphine Project. Uh, this will enable us to serve an additional 35 individuals with opioid use disorder that are incarcerated in Baltimore County Detention Center. Uh, the opioid use disorder who, uh, people, um, who are incarcerated will have, uh, integrated part in successful therapy, and, um, this will, in order, in order for us to supplement the amount of, uh, clients that we are currently, uh, serving, the $72,996 supplemental appropriation will allow us to increase that amount by an additional 35 individuals.
So is this, is this similar to like some kind of detox, uh, program for when folks come in and they're addicted?
Well, we, this actually is, they're screened, all inmates are screened upon entering the detention center. But this program actually starts once the, uh, individual is within four months of release.
Okay, to prepare them for it. Okay.
Correct.
Anybody have any questions? All righty, thank you, Mr. Richardson.
All right, thank you.
Stay safe.
You too.
Thank you. Okay, next, we're gonna move, uh, to page four. Uh, Bill 120 dash 20, and we have Director Pete Gutwold with us this afternoon.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the council. I also have Terry Hickey here from the Community Development Housing, uh, Group that'll assist in presenting or answering any questions. But Bill 120 dash, 120 dash 20 is requesting County Council approval of a supplemental appropriation that allow county to accept 3 million grant dollars, grant award from the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development. Um, I would be remiss if I didn't mention, thanks for all the support in the resolution and towards the application of getting this award, and this was one of the, this was the largest award granted in the state for, uh, this, this activity. Grant award provides COVID-19-related emergency funding for rental assistance payments to the county households impacted by the pandemic, much less, much like what Lawrence was mentioning before. Uh, the 3 million will assist approximately 500 households impacted by the pandemic. They are in danger of losing their housing. Uh, these housing, uh, will be provided up to six months of rental assistance. Um, if you have any questions, I think myself or Terry can help in responding to any questions.
Uh, so this is just for renters, not for homeowners?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any questions? Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Um, I just wanted to say, good job on securing $3 million for that, uh, it's, uh, sorely needed. You know, in the earlier, some of the earlier discussions, I was hearing 50,000, 60,000, 70,000, which, um, is difficult to kind of address the problem with those low numbers. But I think, uh, $3 million, I would say is very impactful. So nice job, uh, Terry and Pete.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? If not, we'll move on to page eight, which is Bill 121 dash 20.
Good afternoon. Again, um, um, this is, uh, requesting a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $2 million in federal funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, uh, as part of the lead-based paint, uh, hazard reduction grant program to identify and clean up dangerous lead in low-income homes occupied by renters and homeowners. Um, this will be a, you know, uh, targeted outreach effort, uh, for specific homes that are built pre-1978. Uh, we will do specific mailouts. We will go through the housing office to identify properties that, uh, meet the, the, the required income, um, and the, and the need for lead, uh, lead abatement, uh, reductions. Um, our typical media outlets, you know, will be using newspapers, radios, and social media to, to outreach to these individuals. But the idea is to, over a three-year program, to address it in about a 110 homes, particularly with, uh, young children that are, that, that live in those homes. Um, and there will be a supplemental, um, I mean, part of this will be done with a match of $200,000, but that $200,000 in administrative costs will be in-kind services, uh, that will be using existing staff, uh, to achieve that goal of remediating about 110 homes, uh, throughout the county. There's not any one particular geographic area. Um, it's really focused on the type of unit and the date in which those units have been built. So this was a, a big effort on, uh, planning staff to get this, uh, this money, um, and it was very successful. We're looking forward to implementing this program.
Sounds great. Uh, any questions for Mr. Gutwold? Okay, while you're here, we might as well, let's, uh, move down to, uh, council business. And, uh, you talked about Resolution 142 dash 20.
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair and members of the council. This is, um, this is, uh, putting your support behind, uh, the county's support of a TOD, a Transit Oriented Development that has been designated by the Maryland Department of Transportation. And yes, I should thank you, Councilwoman, uh, Wyman Bevins, for all your support in making this happen. Uh, you're instrumental in, in, uh, convincing the state that this was a good idea. This, uh, allows, uh, for, uh, basically the area around the Mark Station in about a half-mile radius to, uh, utilize a bunch of other tools in their toolbox, uh, for development in that area. Um, it's focused on density, mixed use, um, also multimodal, so because of the Mark Train Station, bicycle, pedestrian, uh, all those types of things will be, uh, achievements that we're gonna try in, in this given area of the, of the designation. Um, we don't know what technical assistance or discretionary programs or financing tools that anybody may use, but it's another check-in-the-box. This is already an opportunity zone. It's already a sustainable community. So a lot of these things are available for the, for the property owners in this area. This is, just puts this at a higher priority in the state when they start, when you start competing at this level for sustainable community grants, community legacy types of, of funding that's awarded. This puts it at a higher level in, in competition for the rest of the state, uh, for this, these, it's this area or the, one of these property owners to go after. So, um, it's a big feather in our cap. Uh, it's the second of, of one in the, in the entire county, and I think the eighth overall in the entire state, uh, that has been, uh, designated a TOD center by the state, uh, by the Maryland Department of Transportation. So we're excited about this, uh, opportunity and agreement moving forward, so.
I, I'm, I'm super excited, and, uh, I want to thank you and everyone that had any involvement in this. And I know it's, it's been a great deal involved over the last several years, but it's really been over the last two years that this has really heated up, and it just goes to show you never take no for an answer, and just keep pushing forward. And I know you're probably, you know, used to doing that all the time. And, uh, you know, uh, this is definitely a game changer for Middle River. It's gonna be, uh, something spectacular. I just hope I live long enough to see it get done. Uh, but, uh, it, it's really something. I'm really excited, sir. Thanks for all your work.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Councilman Marks.
Yeah, thank you. I, I agree with your sentiments. Um, you know, I, I used to take that train to Washington every day. And the neat thing about that location, it is a truly intermodal location in Baltimore County. Um, it has the airport, right, Arm State Airport. It's got the train stop. It's got highway access. I mean, I can't think of another, uh, another location that is intermodal within our county, has all the modes of transportation. So, Kuta, to you for your work in getting this through.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, yes.
I could, uh, like to just welcome you and the east side to the, uh, Transit Oriented Development, uh, community. I am very proud of the, uh, Owens Mills Metro Center, which is a transit-oriented development. Right now, it's the only one in Baltimore County, and, uh, it is a tremendous economic driver, uh, for our community. It is the hub of our downtown Owens Mills, and, uh, people just, they, they park their cars. Some folks live, work in downtown Baltimore, but they park their cars. They get on the subway. They're downtown in a couple of minutes. They're back after work without, uh, clogging up the Beltway or the byways. And, uh, it's just a wonderful, uh, uh, addition to our community, and I'm sure it's gonna be just as wonderful to your community as well.
Uh, thank you for saying so. I, I've been, uh, to your part of town several times. Last time I was there, I was there to, um, see our mutual friend who heads up the, um, uh, the Negro Baseball Museum. And that's, that is there. Most people don't even know that. They say, where, where? I don't know where. I said, well, every time you get off the elevator, you see a piece of it. You know, it's, it's, it's in pieces there. I would, I would stand there and, and think, what if, you know, this, I could have this in the eastern Baltimore County? And it's finally happened. Uh, so, um, there'll be a hotel. There'll be apartments. There'll be, um, great recreational, basically a sports arena, and, um, I'm just looking, I'm just looking forward to it. And I, um, I, I really think the people, um, in eastern Baltimore County are gonna appreciate having a place like that to work, um, or visit. So, yeah, it's gonna be good. So now we got to the west side and the east side. We, we got it. We got it.
And you know, uh, to, uh, another point that I, you know, it, it sort of highlights, um, when we think about transit-oriented developments and all the things that it has to offer, it highlights the need for additional mass transit. Uh, I'm sorry that the, uh, what is it, the red line was canceled, but, uh, sooner or later, we will get to a point where we will expand all these mass transit, uh, uh, modes of transportation, and these, uh, transit-oriented developments will be even that much more important and desire.
Greenlee is, um, one quarter of a mile, um, from this location, and there, there's not even a, uh, a bus, a bus line on 43 yet to go from Middle River through to White Marsh or to Towson. Um, so we have, you know, 7,000 jobs up here, and there's a lot of people that can't come to work here because they can't figure out how to get to and get from. Um, so yes, we definitely have a lot more, uh, work to do in this area, for sure.
Madam Chair?
I agree, Madam Chair.
Councilman, was that, um, Crandall?
Okay, Patoka. So, um, I, I think you're, uh, I'm really pleased to hear, uh, that you've got transit-oriented development, uh, in your district and in Councilman Jones's district. I think these kinds of developments are, uh, it's part of, uh, Baltimore County 21st Century. And, uh, I, I agree with Councilman Jones that the decision to kill the red line was, um, a very poor decision. And it was not a decision that can be reversed in a year or two. It's a generational decision that was made where we returned, uh, almost $900 million back to the federal government, where it could have been, um, a way for people, uh, to get to their job, um, a terrific employment generator. And it was a decision to invest it instead of in Baltimore County and Baltimore City in, uh, Montgomery County, where the purple lawn, which I understand is struggling, uh, where we could have had a, a much stronger investment and not returned $900 million, over, over $900 million to the federal government, and had this tremendous economic generator that, uh, we'd have here in Baltimore County and Baltimore City, and like we have, um, at Metro Center and, and your district, Councilman Jones, and now in your district, Council Chair Bevins.
Madam Chair, may I?
Yes, Councilman Jones.
Uh, you know, let me just add one more piece to that, that Councilman Patoka, I certainly agree with everything you said. And just a reminder to anyone out there that is listening, I mean, this, uh, that red line was so important because for every person that sit on that train, that would have been one less car on the road. So whether you work in Baltimore, or you work in Howard County, or wherever you're going, if you travel through Baltimore County, that red line put it, or if you travel through Baltimore- Baltimore County or Baltimore City, that red line could have been very helpful to you by alleviating traffic on the road. Thank you.
And, you know, something we haven't even mentioned for the East Side, for this particular area, right across the street is the waterfront, and we haven't even looked at the possibilities of what can happen there on that waterfront, especially with Strawberry Point being directly across the street, which is deep water there. You know, between District Six and Seven, Councilman Crandall and I have 200 miles of waterfront and probably only a dozen restaurants, and, you know, which are only utilized really in the spring and summer. Some can't even survive during the winter and stay open. Some barely hang on. And then we have marinas, and some of those marinas, you know, have a restaurant and a swim pool and, and maybe a club attached, but not many. Some are just boatyards, and I think that we're really underutilizing our waterfront, and I hope that this TOD starts to get the state and the county thinking, you know, what can we do on this waterfront to create jobs and to get people excited about coming to eastern Baltimore County from all parts and not just Baltimore County, but our surrounding states. I know that more than 40% of the boats that are parked in our marinas are from out of Baltimore County, and a very large amount of them are from Pennsylvania. So, you know, people travel a significant amount of time to get here, to enjoy our waterfront. They're not really spending money here. They're getting on their boats, and then they're going to the eastern shore, or they're going to Annapolis or going somewhere else. And I really believe if we had something here for them, that they would stay here and they would spend their money right here. So I'm sure that's going to be a conversation, and to have both land and sea working for us down here in Middle River. Okay. If we don't have any more comments or question, and we don't have any questions for Mr. Gutwold, thank you very much, and have a nice night. And council members, we're going to move to contracts, and on, oh, it's an addendum. We have Mr. James Benjamin with us, and he's going to talk to us about a contract.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the council. The administration is requesting approval for a contract with Nelson Mullins Riley and Scarborough LLP to provide outside legal counsel with respect to an employment discrimination claim filed against the county. Several employees are material witnesses resulting in a conflict of interest, which requires the county to seek outside legal representation. If approved, the contract will continue through October 31, 2021, and renew automatically for two additional one-year periods, with the option to extend the initial term or renewal in an additional 120 days. The contract does not specify a maximum compensation for the initial one-year term. Compensation may not exceed 1.2 million for the entire three-year and four-month term, including renewal and extension periods. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benjamin. Any questions from the members? All righty. Thank you, Mr. Benjamin.
Thank you.
Next, we're going to move back down to council business, miscellaneous business on page 32. Mr. Boswick, are you with us? Are you going to take this over?
Sorry, Madam Chair. Yes, this is the council's consideration of the appointments, or the nominations, rather, by the county executive of, of the chair and vice chair to the planning board. These appointments are made by the county executive, but they are subject to council confirmation, and the county executive has nominated Nancy, Ms. Nancy Hafford to be the next chair, and Mr. Scott Haluka to be the next vice chair of the planning board, and I think they are both with us on the webex, and perhaps start with Ms. Hafford.
Good afternoon, Ms. Hafford.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair.
I don't know if this town's big enough for two madam chairs.
They can handle it.
It'll be hard.
Two weeks left, sister.
Do you have anything to say for yourself, Ms. Hafford, about being on the planning board and being, are you the first woman to chair the county, the planning board?
I'm not sure.
Does anybody know that?
I don't know, but I think that's a possibility.
Oh!
I'm, I'm very grateful. I've been on the planning board since 2011. I was appointed by our past county executive, Kevin Cabinetts. I'm very grateful, but I've, I've got to share with you all what a wonderful experience this has all been, because going around to all your different jurisdictions every year and listening, listening to your constituents, Baltimore County is a great place to be, and I feel so fortunate to be here, and I'm very grateful to have served under two wonderful chairmans. The most recently, Scott Phillips, who's not just a mentor, but a good friend, and Ed Gillis, two wonderful people that taught me a lot, and I feel grateful. And the planning department, they work so hard, and I feel very fortunate to work with them, and I'm looking forward to serve, if that's what you all desire.
Well, thank you, Ms. Hafford. I, I have always felt like you were such a, a good fit for the planning board because you're not a business owner, but being the executive director of the Towson Chamber, you work with business owners, you know, day in and day out, and you really know and understand what it takes for people to run their business, and when they need to expand their business, or they need to move and find another location. And what you do on the planning board, especially during CZMP, is so important that you understand that, and you really do. And I know that you've been helpful with other members, you know, who have been new to the planning board, helping them understand that from a business perspective. So I know that you have really added something special to the council besides your bubbly personality, so we're grateful for that. And, you know, folks, folks, you know, I wish they understood how much time and work and energy went into these positions. Folks, these are volunteer positions. People do not get paid to be on the planning board, and it is a lot of reading, paying attention, going to meetings, talking with other planning board members. So these people should really be commended for what they do and the time and their talents that they've been to sitting on the planning board. So thank you, Ms. Hafford, for me. I know I will be supporting you, and thank you for all you do for the citizens of Baltimore County, not just Towson.
Madam Chair?
Chair?
Yes. Councilman Marks?
Yeah, thank you very much. I have probably interacted with you, Nancy, more than any other council member, although I know as Council, Councilman Bevins knows, you kind of transcend areas. My colleagues, I think there's four qualities, four qualities that make Nancy Hafford a terrific choice for this position. The first, as, as our chair mentioned, is business acumen. The Towson Town Festival that you help run brings 200,000 patrons to this county, one of the largest on the east coast. The second quality is your familiarity with revitalization programs and grants, which are so important, particularly this year. The third quality is your history with redevelopment. You know, I've been on the council for 10 years now. It is amazing the changes we have seen in Towson. It is an absolute success story for county government and for private business. And the fourth quality is collaborative spirit, and you've always been someone to, to bring together stakeholders, and I have no doubt that you will do that as chair of this body. I'm very proud to support you, and I'm very proud of you. You've been a good friend. You're going to do a great job in this division.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Councilman Jones.
Yes, I would like to just co-sign everything you said, Madam Chair, as well as Councilman Marks. Ms. Hafford, I've known you for a number of years, and you have certainly been bundle of joy, and you've been a stark advocate for Towson and Baltimore County. And I like to say that you have been the type of person that, in my opinion, you certainly call it the way you see it. You call balls and strikes, and you've just been a tremendous advocate for Baltimore County, and I can't think of a better person on the planning board as, as a chair than yourself. And I guess I wanted to just congratulate you. I certainly will be supporting you, and I appreciate everything you've done, and appreciate the person that you are, and the person that I've come to know over the years, and I'm just very, very happy that the county executive made this excellent choice in choosing you. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, well, thank you again, Ms. Hafford, and we will see you on Monday.
Thank you. Thank you all very, very much. I appreciate it.
Take care. Okay, Mr. Boswick, I believe we have another appointment.
Yes, Madam Chair. The county executive nomination to be the vice chair of the planning board is Mr. Scott Haluka.
Hi, Mr. Haluka. How are you?
I'm fine, Kathy.
Good. It's good to see you. We can hardly hear you. You might want to get closer to your mic or turn your volume up.
Up as far as it'll go.
Oh, okay. We can hear you just a little bit better. Well, it's good to see you, and congratulations on the nomination for vice chair. I will certainly be giving you my support. I've known you way before I was elected, and you've just been such an outstanding citizen in eastern Baltimore County, and all the work that you've done within the community, and I certainly appreciate you and the time you've spent on the council, and even the phone calls, you know, that you've taken the time to call me about CZMP issues in my district, so you would have a better understanding. So, and that's really when somebody's paying attention and really want to understand what those issues are. So thank you so much for all of your time and talents that you've spent. How many years have you been on the planning board, Scott?
This is my second go-round, so.
Second.
Second, second time round, so this is probably five, six years.
Five years. Five years. So, yeah, so, you know, again.
It's the M P.
Okay, you've had two. Okay. The, the first one's the worst, right? The first one's always the worst. So, again, appreciating the history that you have for eastern Baltimore County and the interest that you have in land use and the things that are being done in Baltimore County, and I know that you've served on, on many other things, or wear many other hats within the county, and we really appreciate that. So you'll certainly have my support, and I'll turn that over to my colleagues for any questions or comments from Mr. Haluka.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Councilman Crandall.
Scott, good, good to see you. Just first want to say, "Howdy, neighbor." I can jump across the railroad tracks and be at Scott and Amy's house from, from our house. And although our, our politics may be a little bit different on, on certain things, if you don't know Scott, he's an extremely intelligent and thoughtful person, and I, I know that he will serve the citizens of Baltimore County, or continue to serve the citizens of Baltimore County well on the planning board. I think that he, Kathy, you're right, he, he's very active in the community and, and various things that he does, but I think he's kind of a land use geek. I mean that affectionately. And I, I know that Scott is very thorough in, in how he, he looks at things, and he's, I find him, known him for a number of years. He's, he's a family friend as well, and I think he's, he's a detail-oriented guy, and, and I think would be a good support person for our new chairwoman. Scott, congratulations. I look forward to voting for you.
I appreciate that.
Anyone else?
Yes, Madam Chair?
Yes, Councilman.
Councilman Patoka. I want to congratulate both Ms. Hafford and Mr. Haluka on their nominations for chair and vice chair of the planning board. I think it's a great opportunity, especially today, there's going to be changes in the planning department with longtime employees, three that I know of, I don't know if it's public or not, that are, will be departing, and three very talented employees. So I had a discussion with Pete Gutwold today about, he called it the brain drain, and to some degree, that's true, but it's also a time for opportunity for new ways of thinking, bringing in new talent. And so I, I think it's important that I share with you that it is a time for opportunity, especially being leaders of the, on the, on the planning board side. The other thing I would share with you is, a longtime planner, is though there are, I, I do continuing education to keep certain planning credentials in place, and I noticed that there are many, many opportunities for planning board and planning commissioners to do this training, and I think it, it's sponsored by the American Planning Association, and there's a Maryland chapter, and it gives you a great opportunity to interact with people that are doing the very same thing for other jurisdictions, and I think there's a lot to be gained from that interaction. I'm happy to share that with you. I know that Pete and some of the other planners over there probably have access to these trainings, but some are, like I said, specifically tailored, not for the planner, but for the, the board member or the commissioner, depending on how they, what they call it in different jurisdictions. So, again, congratulations. Always feel free to call on me if you, if you feel like talking about planning issues, but again, I look forward to voting to support both of your nominations.
Thank you, Councilman. Anyone else?
Yes, Madam Chair. I guess wanted to just take an opportunity to congratulate Mr. Haluka, and I've heard nothing but good things about you, and I guess wanted to congratulate you on your appointment or your nomination, and I too look forward to voting for you. Thank you very much for your service.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All righty. Thank you, and good luck to both of you, and thank you for your service. And Scott, I already know you're used to woo-hoo coming out of Nancy, so, you know, right? It's going to be nothing new?
Uh-uh. I'll be virtual for now, so.
Okay. Okay. All right. We'll, we'll see you both on Monday. Take care.
Thank you.
Mr. Boswick, did we skip page 32? On page 32?
No, no. That's just the correspondence that I read at the meeting. I mean, it's never been the subject of a work session. It's just required to be announced at the next legislative session.
Okay. I'm just crossing off everything I'm doing, and notice that was still there. Okay. Okay, so I think our last piece of business today is council business, and it's on page 24. Mr. Marks, Bill 120-20.
Yes, thank you very much. The Honeygill area is a special development district in Perry Hall with rigid design guidelines. The area was created by the county council in 1994. There's been a prohibition on panhandle lots in a large part of the Honeygill district since before my election to the council. Our office is working with the Perry Hall Improvement Association to tighten the definition of a panhandle lot. We've had some extensive discussions, not only with the PHIA, but also the administration, the Department of Planning about the bill, and there will likely be an amendment as a result of those conversations.
Okay. But there's no amendment?
Not yet. Not yet.
Okay. All right. Any questions for Mr. Marks? Okay, I think.
Just a comment.
There may be a speaker. I think Pat Keller was, did he sign up?
I don't think so. I thought Ms. Bell Casher said no speakers for today. Did that change?
No, Madam Chair, we did not have any speakers registered for today.
Just a, Madam Chair?
Yes. Yes.
Just a comment for Mr. Marks, just in, on panhandle lots, for Councilman Marks, I'm sorry, on panhandle lots in general. And especially those where there are multiple houses that stem off of those panhandles. I noticed when I was campaigning that many do not have street addresses. And so I, you know, and I didn't know which, whose house, whose door I was knocking on because there was no street address. And I thought, you know, if it were an emergency vehicle looking for a specific house when you have three or four coming off of a panhandle without street addresses. I didn't know if we, and maybe this is a question for Mr. Benjamin or Mr. Gutwold or Boswick. Is there a requirement to have a street address on those type of lots?
Yeah, don't you have to have an address?
I would think so. I can't imagine why not. That's not a great answer, but.
Yeah.
Okay. Councilman Patoka, I'm. I think I've been made aware through the years that there must be an address posted, not only on the front of the house, but if you have an alley on the back of the house as well. I, I thought that that was codified in Baltimore County. That's the, I'll leave it to the attorneys to point you in the right direction. But that, that's always been my impression.
Yeah, I think that's right, but I will confirm that for you, Councilman.
Thanks. It was just a concern.
Yeah, I think it is. I know in Anaronda County with the law, and as I understood in just about every jurisdiction around with the law, that people do in fact have a certain size address on, on their house visible from the street just because of emergencies.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And Pat Keller, by the way, who was a former director of planning, is the one working on possibly tightening the language.
Okay.
He's the president of the Perry Hall Improvement Association now.
All right, David, I'll talk to you offline about this. I just have a few questions about it. We'll talk offline.
In answer to Mr. Patoka's question, Madam Chair, I tend to say that section thirty-five, two, that's two oh six of the county code, it states that the owner of improved property shall prominently display numerals or letters at least three inches in height, designating the address assigned to the property in a conspicuous space on or about the property on conspicuous background and in a location that is unobstructed and clearly visible from the street and from any street or alley, as Mr. Crandall indicated, providing the public vehicular access to the rear. So there it is.
Thank you, Mr. Boswick.
Thank God for the internet.
I, I lived nearby Bay Country. And that was a huge neighborhood with all panhandle lots on the right side. So there was four houses off of every drive. So what they did normally have an even and an odd side for every other house. They kept all the evens on that side and the odds on that side. So people weren't going back and forth trying to figure out the number on those back houses. So you, you, you could just figure the top, the front two and then the back two. Because you couldn't see the two behind the front two. You shared a driveway and it went back and then split. And there was hundreds of homes that were addressed like that. So, yeah, really confusing when you're looking for a specific address. Or sometimes they have an address and they have an A, B, C, or D. Or they have F addresses, which I think is unusual, too. They'll do that when they add a lot somewhere. So, okay, I think that's the end. Mr. Boswick, did you have any business for us or any announcements?
No, no, Madam Chair, you are correct. Legislative session on Monday.
Okay, so.
I will say, if I may, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, there is one thing. Wednesday, which is tomorrow, we, we have, and we've advertised this and it's on our website. The APSO, the Adequate Public Facilities Task Force, Ordinance Task Force, will be holding a public hearing tomorrow, tomorrow afternoon. The time is, I don't, I wish I had the, the time is. Chris, what time? The APSO Task Force.
Four o'clock, Mr. Secretary.
What time, four o'clock?
Yes, sir.
So that, that will be at four o'clock. That will of course be a virtual meeting, Madam Chair. And, you know, before they make their recommendations and submit them, they, they wanted to hold this public hearing to give the public the opportunity to weigh in on, on the various input that people may have throughout the county.
Right, okay. Thank you. Well, they're calling for some snow. Ms. Rogers didn't come back and join us, but I think it's supposed to be significant. So everybody stay safe. Please continue to wash your hands, social distance, for God's sake, stay out of the bars. I can't stand it. I just have too many people that I know that are sick right now. So please stay diligent and stay away from each other, folks.
Try to do lots of, try to do lots of carryout, though, if you can, to support, support our restaurants and our small businesses in crazy times, so.
Yeah, yeah, order, order carryout, order carryout if you can. But, okay, we'll see everybody on, on Monday.